Good evening and welcome to the Bellevue City Council meeting for Monday, March 23rd, 2016. First item, 2015. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And then it will be followed by the invocation by Reverend Darryl Kenny, Lighthouse Baptist Church, 3919 Green Avenue.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. God, we ask for wisdom for this group as before them, our considerations, not only to deny but in the future, of people and property. And God, we would ask for your wisdom for them in making wise choices concerning both of these as they impact our city. Lord, I just thank you for the privilege of living in Bellevue and the fond memories I have of being here and the just the love that those of us here have for this city. And we thank you for your blessing upon it. Pray you continue blessing upon it. I pray a blessing for this board and you would give insight to them and discernment as they move forward, praying in Jesus' strong name. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Kenny. Item number two. We'll call this meeting to order. Sabrina, could you please call roll?
Mr. Carmichael.
Here.
Mr. Hanson.
Here.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Preister.
Here.
Mr. Modri.
Here.
Mrs. Blood.
Present.
Item 2A, this meeting will be conducted according to the Open Meetings Act posted the entry to the council chambers. Item three, approval of minutes and advisory committee reports. 3A, approval of agenda, Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Modri. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3B, approval of consent agenda, Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 3C is under consent. 4 is under consent. Item number five, organization matters. 5A, appointment of city engineer, Mr. Jeff Roberts. Like to say a few words.
I just thank you Mayor for bringing me up for appointment on this and I guess I'll answer any questions or anything if anybody has anything.
Council, have any questions? Mr. Preister.
Thank you Mayor. I appreciate the nomination and I move to approve the nomination of Jeff Roberts as the city engineer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Roberts. 5B, appointment city treasurer, who is ill today, Mr. Rich Severson. He is not here to ask, answer any questions, but Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of the city treasurer.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Severson. 5C, appointment of city attorney, Mr. Sullivan with Adams &amp; Sullivan. We wanted to meet two objectives. One was to keep fees down and we accomplished that and to assist us to possibly move on with a full-time attorney in the future. So if you have a few words you'd like to say?
I just want to say I appreciate the Mayor's support. There is, I believe completely coincidentally, probably the lowest attorney bill you've had since I've been here. We have been, don't get used to that by the way, but we have been striving on a lot of internal issues that have resolved themselves. There are still going to be projects, there are still going to be issues that pop up, but we are hoping to maintain fees at a lower rate. I think when we started this in the Mayor's first term, some of the issues that we were going to address took much longer time and work to get through those, but I think that we've done that. Additionally, I did provide all of you about a year ago some cost ideas with respect to going to an in-house attorney. Those numbers were fairly conservative in my opinion. Going in-house doesn't make attorney costs go away, they just get moved to a different line item in a sense. I believe that the staff that I have is doing a great job at supporting the city and being timely with issues. And at this point, I think it's in the best interest that we still proceed in the manner that we have. I will mention to you though that I, you'll have a contract coming to you in a couple of weeks. The only significant change is an increase of $15 an hour for the billable hours. And that is an increase, if you take it over the six or seven years that I've been here, about a 2% increase. And it's just a matter of maintaining good quality attorneys. I've got to be able to pay them and to pay them, I've got to charge some type of reasonable fee. I will tell you that those fees are easily one-third less than what I, my private clients pay on a per hour basis.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Mr. Preister.
Thank you Mayor. I appreciate your comments in terms of looking to the future for our own in-house city attorney and I, I don't think that's going to save us any money. I actually think it's going to cost us more. But I think we do need to do that eventually, but that's a little bit more down the road and I appreciate that you're looking at that. With that, I would like to make the motion to approve the city attorney as Pat Sullivan of, do you, does, do I need to make that?
Yeah.
At Sullivan, okay.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Sullivan.
Thank you.
Item 5D, appointment of city administrator, Mr. Dan Burlowitz. The list is long of your accomplishments over the past four years. It hasn't been easy. From day one though, we followed the process of the hiring as well as any of the processes in your office. So it hasn't been easy, but you've been recognized not just in the city of Bellevue as well as the state of Nebraska through the League of Municipality and distinguished citizens management award. So I want to thank you for that, but I know of a few words that you'd like to say, Mr. Burlowitz.
Thank you Mayor Sanders. Yeah, I do want to, I did pass out earlier today to the council a list of the administration's accomplishments. It's out on the front table for the public. And I've had the honor of serving under Mayor Sanders for almost four years, the majority of her term. But I do want to take a little time. I know we have a lengthy agenda, but I think it's important to cover a number of key accomplishments of the administration. Unfortunately, often the public only sees a very limited view of what the administration accomplishes through the media. And often it isn't the full picture of what gets completed behind the scenes. When I interviewed for this position four years ago, I went through a rather lengthy interview process. And at that time, the city council and the mayor emphasized that there were some significant issues that needed to be addressed. There were issues in operations, there were issues in personnel, and there were issues in finance. And it was stressed that the new administrator would have to promptly take steps to address those issues. Unfortunately, the prior administration had not made the difficult decisions or taken necessary action to effectively address those. I remember during my first year, as I started off in the position, the mayor had, I think, jokingly told me that I would have a big hole to fill. And probably about three, four months into my service for the city, I told her it wasn't really a big hole to fill, it was more like the Grand Canyon. I can say with pride that today, that hole is much smaller. There's a number of things we've accomplished and I won't be real lengthy, but I think they're key things that are important. For one, I've been able to develop a highly professional, strong and effective management team. That occurred because I implemented a consistent, open, two-way communication with my management staff. And any one of them can get up and tell you that communication did not exist before. I'm also very strong on participatory management. My directors know that I value and seek their input in the decisions as well as the mayor seeking my input. I've also done a lot to try to empower my managers, to try to provide them with all the tools and guidance necessary for them to do their jobs well. Obviously, if staff doesn't perform well, managers don't perform well, administration and the council do not perform well. Accountability. Part of this management system and communication and what I've indicated is predicated upon accountability. Accountability of myself to the mayor and the council, accountability of my directors to myself, accountability, all of us, to the citizens that pay taxes in this community. Coming into it, there were significant issues and I did have to do some restructuring of city operations. And unfortunately, I did have to eliminate some unnecessary city positions through reduction in force. We no longer had a wastewater treatment plant, but yet we had five people in jobs that no longer had a basis for their work. We contracted out for information technology. Fortunately, we had staff that were still here in those positions. Those, some of those positions were removed, some of the individuals were able through their bumping rights to union to retain their other positions. It was not an enjoyable process, but it was something that, coming into this position, the council and the mayor expected me to do. I'm also proud that we've formed a strong labor negotiation team and we've successfully negotiated currently, out of six unions, four union contracts that are more fiscally sustainable and more fiscally responsible than before. What it equates to is a fair and equitable contracts to our employees and also to our taxpayers. I've also oversaw the, and directed the updating of our ADA efforts. When I came, the last time, the city had evaluated itself for compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act was 1996. And it's expected by the Justice Department that cities update and review their American with Disabilities plans every four years. We evaluated all our facilities, all of our programs, all of our services, and I can proudly say we have taken significant measures to come into compliance. We have an internal ADA committee that quarterly meets and reviews to make sure that we're on task in meeting all those obligations. We also have an ADA capital improvement plan that allows for us to identify low and no-cost measures we can implement and also those that require longer-term financing. One of the things I'm very proud of is overseeing and with my staff implementing a performance management system. I talked about accountability briefly. When I came, there was only one department that had an evaluation system for their employees, that was the police department. Now we have an evaluation system that's based upon performance standards for all of our employees, including myself. Also under that system and our new contracts, we now have performance-based pay. That means I and other employees move in our pay, along our pay lines based upon performance, not years of service. Again, accountability and providing back quality service to our citizens. The intent of this whole system was to increase employee motivation, to be more productive and more accountable to our citizens. Ultimately, the goal of performance management is to eventually bring the city of Bellevue into recognition as a nationally known and recognized high-performance organization. I can truthfully say, and the mayor can vouch for this, myself, I have made an effort to consistently meet and exceed my performance goals as I hold my managers and staff accountable. Oversaw the implementation of our strategic planning system. Councilmember Blood had done a lot of work on our strategic planning and I think we've taken it to another level. We dedicate in management time and staff time and council time to a full day of establishing one- and three-year strategic initiatives. The end result, we have a report which the council formally adopts that lays out specific key action steps and assigns accountability to assure that these key strategic initiatives are met. And we do quarterly reports at the request of councilmember Preister, which I think has been very effective. I've been involved in overseeing and directing the implementation of a priority-based budget system and a biennial budget. Priority-based budgeting is critical during the times where we've been faced with extremely tight financial resources. It's allowed us to use an online survey to obtain citizen input so as we budget, we can use that as a basis to determine what do the citizens feel are our priorities in allocating limited resources. With the priority-based budgeting system and management, budget management goals assigned to all directors, we had moved from a $5 million budget deficit to a positive financial position. That puts us in a stronger position as we move forward with economic development. We're the very first city in the state of Nebraska, first-class cities that have implemented a two-year biennial budget. That's been a big plus because it's allowed us to do better long-range financial forecasting and planning to manage the growth of this city. We are the third-largest city in the state and we are growing and we will continue to grow. I've had the privilege of overseeing and directing the implementation of our capital improvement planning. A comprehensive plan that sets five-year goals and a current capital improvement plan every year. That had not been done for several years before I came. Oversaw also and directed the implementation of an employee succession plan, which is in its infancy, but it's moving forward. That plan is critical because it increases the city's ability to replace experienced managers and other key employee positions with quality leaders and a trained workforce to continue quality and uninterrupted service to our citizens. Our demographics means we're losing quality people and we need to be positioned to be able to fill those slots with people that can do the job and do it well. I've also oversaw and directed implementation of standard operating procedures in all departments. That ties into succession planning. We have standard operating procedures to guide our employees to do effectively, to effectively do their work in a safe and productive manner. It also ties in as people come onboard, they have standard operating procedures to follow to help guide them in the work they do. Earlier today, we were talking about our employee wellness program. We are making an effort from administrative standpoint and also with council support to enhance that program. We do have a ways to go. We've talked about incentives and that's something we're going to work towards, but it is moving forward and I truly believe it will blossom and become the type of wellness program that we hope it to be. I've also had the privilege to be the key member of the city team on the conference center project and the new public safety building projects. The administration successfully applied for and was awarded from the Nebraska Department of Economic Development, a $1,150,000 grant for that conference center project. That was significant because it reduces the financial burden on our citizens. It also shows the quality of work because it's a very competitive grant program. We received the largest grant that they have ever awarded under that program. I'm proud also to say, and as the council knows and will be putting out publicly, that we will be having a groundbreaking ceremony for the conference center on April 9th of this year with a projected completion date in the spring of a year from now. There'll be a new conference center, there'll be a new Marriott Courtyard Hotel, something this community can be very proud of. And I've also oversaw and approved the hiring of several new employees, key employees, as well as replacing some key executives' positions. Among those were a new HR manager who now handles all our disciplinary situations and investigations, freeing up legal time, freeing up administrative time. I hired an assistant city administrator to focus actively on community economic development projects. Recently, we've been dealing with Project Evolution, which is a major project, and a number of other projects that will come forward. We recently hired the first full, 21 full-time new firefighters for the city of Bellevue. The funding of 12 of those positions is through a $2 million safer grant, again, reducing the tax burden on our community, but bringing on 21 full-time firefighters to help ensure that we can provide high-quality fire suppression service to our citizens. We've also hired a finance and a compliance manager within the finance department as well as a new finance accountant, again bolstering the financial resource capabilities within that department. You have an audit before you tonight. That audit, you will see is the quality of the work that has went into that from our finance staff is very impressive and I'm very proud of it. I think you should be too. I've also had the opportunity to hire a police chief in Mark Albert, who replaced a former chief. Mark is a stellar individual, we can be very proud of him. He teaches nationally to other law enforcement agencies. Mark is doing a superlative job. I also hired Public Works Director Robert, Jeff Roberts. Jeff is doing an excellent job as well as you all know. And recently, I hired a new library director, Julie Denville, who is very qualified and will do an excellent job for the library. Probably most of important, what I'm really proud of is the fact that we have an improved culture within the city of Bellevue city government. You can ask any of my staff that we now have a culture that emphasizes accountability, equality and fairness for all of our employees, as well as promoting and encouraging professional and high-quality services to our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Burlowitz. Mr. Preister.
Did you want to say something first, Mayor?
Nope, go ahead, please.
Thank you Mayor. I made a list of a few things that I wanted to mention because I think that the, this particular position, although I could have commented on all of them, is a key position and frequently is the face of Bellevue that takes a lot of heat and so sometimes the public does not get the full picture. And one of the things that I particularly like about the approach that Dan has brought to the job is the systematic implementation of the best management practices, many of which that he outlined. I made a list of some that were important to me in addition to the ones he said, and strategic planning is the first on my list. Any professional organization has to have strategic planning and we have reestablishing the capital improvement plan. We hadn't done that for years and we are now back in that process and it's updated every year. We have the one and the six-year plan that's put together and we know and can better plan and better budget because of that. Performance-based salary increases are essential. You can't just because somebody's been here a long time automatically give them raises. People should perform, they should be rewarded for that performance, and now we have that system in place. I think that the biennial budgeting is also important so that we don't have to spend as much time every year doing it. Oversight of the transition, we moved from volunteer firefighters to professional firefighters, which is no easy task. I give our chief much credit for that, but overseeing that is extremely important and I think Dan has done a good job in the interest of the taxpayers. The Americans with Disability Act requirements, we talked about, but nothing was done on those or very little until Dan started working on those and we are now moving forward finally after years. Regular and more comprehensive administrative reports so the public and all of us know more about what staff are doing. The enhanced contract negotiations and for multiple years with the labor groups is extremely important to us and the taxpayers. Personnel issues that were inherited that we have now resolved, and I believe there were only three of the carryovers that were contested in any way, and the city has not lost any of those. In the past, those personnel issues were challenged and the city was losing because there weren't professional standards implemented to ensure that we had done our homework and we had information put together to make the case stand. That's critical to saving taxpayer dollars. Dan mentioned millions of dollars brought in from the grants, over 2 million for the fire department and thanks his, Dan's leadership, but certainly Larry Burks, our assistant administrator, is the one who wrote that grant and I credit Larry with bringing in that $1.1 million to the city for that new civic center. In addition, the employee succession plan, as we have more people retiring, is going to be very, very important. And we have, under Dan's leadership, hired some extremely well-qualified new employees. I think of the three Marks. We have Mark Albert, who is our new chief of police, doing an excellent job. And in finance, we have two new Marks that have been doing an exceptional job in our finance department. The city clerk, Sabrina, without question is doing an exceptional job filling in and moving us forward. Epiphany Ramos, the new wastewater director, I am extremely impressed with and I think all of us are. Public Works Director Jeff Roberts is doing an exceptional job and for a while did two or three jobs before the department was filled. Abby Highland, our CDBG employee, is doing an excellent job and making sure that we follow all the guidelines now that we're an entitlement city. Ashley Clark in HR, the manager there, doing an exceptional job and will also save us money in terms of how we handle our HR issues. Dean Dunn, our city engineer, is doing an exceptional job in keeping our streets and all of our projects on track. Julie Denville, the new library director. The list goes on, but I haven't had contact with some of the new hires or everybody, so I apologize to anybody that I left out, but it is my opinion, humble or not, that I think we've been moving in the right direction, professionalizing, and I think it's been a team effort. The mayor has done an exceptional job. The council has worked well together and Dan has helped to lead the administrative part of it, and so I appreciate that. With that, I will move to approve the appointment of the city administrator, Dan Burlowitz.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? I see none, please vote.
Vote is three to three.
Mayor, you have the, Mayor, you have the right to break the vote under your powers and duties under 16312.
I have the privilege to make the, tie vote and I vote yes. I look forward to working with you another four years, Mr. Burlowitz.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you Mayor.
Item number six, special presentation, none. Seven liquor license, none. Eight ordinance for adoption, third reading, none. Item nine, ordinance for public hearing, second reading. 9A, ordinance number 3805. Sabrina, could you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3805. An ordinance to amend section 6-1 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to animal care in the city of Bellevue and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this item, please do so at this time. Mr. Preister.
In the event that anybody may come forward, Mayor, I'll just mention that this was brought to me by the police. It isn't an expansion per se, it isn't new law. There has been a ban on trapping within the city, but it gives some clarification to that ban so that when law enforcement does find illegal traps, they can address it. And it, I have had one additional contact of a lady who was over near the Swanson Park area and the old landfill. Since the two police reports were turned in and her dog, as she was walking, it sniffed out and found a snare trap and went over to it and there was an animal that had been caught and all that was left was a carcass. So somebody, whoever is setting these traps, isn't even checking to see what they're catching. And in this case, there was some remains there that the lady wasn't too happy that her dog found or that she was wishing she hadn't seen. So it's an effort to help clarify rather than any new ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone in the public. I'll close the public hearing on this item. The third and final reading will be on Monday, April 13th. 9B, ordinance number 3806. Sabrina, would you please read the ordinance?
Ordinance number 3806. An ordinance to amend section 8.05.07 and add section 8.05.08 to ordinance number 3619, Bellevue zoning ordinance regarding residential and commercial satellite dish antennas. To appeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date of the ordinance.
Thank you. I'm now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance, please do so at this time.
Mayor, if I may, this item is being brought forward by the planning department. We were approached by a commercial business in Bellevue who's looking at putting in a satellite dish that was approximately 13 meters in diameter or about 45 feet. satellite dish that was approximately 13 meters in diameter or about 45 feet in diameter, looking at our ordinance. We did not have anything currently that addresses commercial satellite dishes. We have a section for residential satellite dishes. So we felt like we needed to add something to the zoning ordinance to address the commercial dishes. Otherwise, we would not have permitted them, as you know. If it's not permitted in the zoning ordinance, then it's not allowed. So we felt like we needed to add some language to allow the commercial satellite dishes. We looked at other municipalities in the area. Nobody has anything like this, and so we're kind of blazing the trail, I guess, on satellite dishes for commercial areas. If the council has any recommended changes, the heights and whatnot that are in there are just items that staff came up with as far as one being 25 feet, whether it needs a conditional use permit or not. So any, any proposed changes, I'd be happy to entertain, and like I said, I'm not, not really married to any of these heights or dimensions that are in this ordinance.
Councilwoman Blood.
Chris, don't we already have some businesses that have satellite dishes?
I think we do.
I mean, a considerable amount.
I know out, out in front of, out in the South Road, in front of Coast Sentry, they've got some. The Cox Communications, that's over on, Cornusker has them. I, I think they were just added as, I'll say, accessory uses to the businesses that were there. But when we were approached by the extremely, what we felt was an extremely large satellite dish that would have been 45 feet or so in diameter, we took another, excuse me, we took a closer look at the ordinance and felt that an amendment was necessary to address something that big.
So the concern that I, I have, which may not really even be a concern if we're going to pass this anyway, is that, first of all, I have nothing against anybody having satellite dishes. I'm guessing sports bars need them. I'm guessing, I know some banks have them in town. But if it wasn't part of the zoning code, how did those happen?
Like I said, I think they were probably just allowed as an accessory use. And this would also allow items, I'll say not necessarily as an accessory use, but as a, as a permitted use. If you have a vacant lot where somebody wanted to put a satellite dish of the size, we can go through the process and approve it as not as an accessory use where you would need a fully permitted use.
So you're talking, your biggest concern are for those that are the large ones that actually require almost property as opposed to the top of a building?
Yes, we do have a provision for the top of the building not to exceed 10, 15 feet above the roof line. If it's something larger than that or something greater than 25 feet in height on the ground, then we would go through the conditional use permit process. Otherwise, they would be permitted under the ordinance without the conditional use permit process.
And we've looked at the existing satellite dishes on the various buildings. Like I say, I know there's some banks with them and to make sure that they're in compliance with what we're writing.
We believe they are, and we, we looked especially at the ones out in front of Coast Sentry. We weren't sure exactly how tall they were, but looking at the property out there and where the fences and whatnot, we're pretty certain that these are in compliance with these regulations that we came up with.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this item. This, too, will have the third and final reading on Monday, April the 13th. Nine B, ordinance number 3807. Sabrina, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number 3807. An ordinance to amend sections 2-26 and 2-29 of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to the time and location of regular city council meetings, the elimination of pre-council meetings, and the preparation of the agenda for regular council meetings. To repeal sections 2-26 and 2-29 as heretofore existing, to provide for the publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form, and to provide for the, for an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. I'll now open for public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to speak on this ordinance, please do so at this time.
Yes, Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. There's no citizen in this city who's been to more pre-council meetings than myself. I remember back when, when a couple of council people wanted to get raises. One of the key things they talked about that time was they wanted more younger people to be on the council. I think I've heard or read where the average age in this council right now is 61 years old. But after that, then what do you do? You have a pre-council meeting, and I've been, like I said, I've been going to them. I don't think they're necessary. If you want younger people to be in the council, they can't afford to be, get off on their jobs. And my experience, what I've seen here, is just a couple of council people just take a lot of time and ask directors' questions or employees' questions they could ask before the meeting, way before the meeting, and get the information to all the rest of the council people. I think it's a, there's no reason we have to have city employees here when they could be at their job. Mark Elbert, our chief of police, is, does, like everybody says, has done a fantastic job, and I believe so also. But I think he's better being out there with his police force than being here at a pre-council meeting. And that's for the rest of the people here, too, that are city employees. I think it's a no-brainer. It's time to get rid of it. Thank you.
Hi, Kathy Sanyuk, Citizen Kathy Sanyuk. Stand out in court. It's quite different being on the other side of the podium. Having been in one of those seats, there's advantages and disadvantages to doing this. I think, though, overall, one of the biggest disadvantages is that I think it deter, it does deter, deter people from running. I know that there are a couple of council people right now who have to take either vacation time or, or time off from their jobs to attend the council meetings. So pros and cons to it. Does it mean there are going to be some late nights? Yes. Does it mean executive sessions will be, have to be held after evening meetings? Yes. Maybe, maybe, though, it just might force you to be precise and, and brief in, in some of those meetings. So pros and cons to it. Overall, though, I do think it deters people from running possibly for this position. So overall, I'd be in favor of, of doing without and see how it goes. If it's an absolute burden and you're here till 10, 11 o'clock, then go back, maybe go back to the way it was. But having been up in that seat, I, I see pros and cons to it, but I think overall, in order for, for more people to run for this position, it should be eliminated. Back when it first started, six, four out of six of us, four out of six of us were brand new, and, and we did want to be together and hear each other's questions and hear the answers. I, I see less of a need for that now with, with people on the council that have been here for a couple of years and know the directors enough to pick up the phone and, and ask them a question. So I would have to agree, I think, with eliminating it. Thanks.
Are there others? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. The third and final reading will be on Monday, 13th. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just for the public interest and also for ours, I want to thank everybody on the council and the mayor and administrators and the directors who put input to this. I don't view it as a yes or a no, we do it or we don't do it. And so I compiled, and it's in your packet, a list of some of the things that I think should be addressed. However we run the meeting, we need to make sure that we're also thinking about the other people who are impacted by the actions that we take. And we got some very good responses. And one of them is that there are time-sensitive contracts being delayed due to questions and concerns not coming up until the meeting nights. So I suggest we find a solution to that. And if that solution is continuing the meeting or not, but at least try to address so that these sensitive contracts can move forward in a timely way. Another one was developers, the chamber, bond writers, insurance representatives, business, and other representatives prefer workdays to nights. They're on duty during the day, and we have had developers come before the city who have had to take hotels out to stay overnight because coming back to a night meeting meant they couldn't get a flight back out of town. So how do we, when we say we want to be open for business, when we want developers and other people to come here and we want to make it convenient for them, how do we accommodate that? So if we eliminate pre-council in the afternoon, how do we accommodate those folks? I think that's another issue to address that was good to be brought up. Another one is our staff, both the non-exempt staff and the staff who are exempt, who would need to stay for a night meeting, and there were 15 at the pre-council today. All of them were on the clock during the daytime, and so there was not really an issue. But when they're required to stay at night, they either will get comp time or they will get overtime. So it's going to cost us more money if we don't have that meeting and we require those people to be here at night. So to the taxpayers and that additional cost, I think we owe them a resolution of that in some way in our decision. Another one is staff need adequate time to present the council questions, to give complete needed answers so that issues are not delayed and most appropriately handled. So yes, we can ask off-the quest, off-the-cuff questions, and sometimes we don't think of them until the last minute. But for the staff to be adequately prepared, for all of us to hear the answers and to respond appropriately, somehow we need to work in that staff get enough notice so they can adequately address our questions. And all council members need to receive the same early answers to be better prepared for making decisions. I don't always understand or know some of the questions to ask that Councilwoman Carmichael would know from his years of being in as a staff, working on a lot of code issues. I can benefit from the questions he asks, but if I don't know he asked them and I don't see an answer, I lose out on that information. So a way so that we can all get that as opposed to the way it was done before, I think, is another thing that we need to address. Outside presentations and employee recognition are best done during the work hours, be accommodating, and help morale. And that goes back to the other two things I already mentioned. Today, we recognize our employees, and we set as a priority in our strategic planning, staff morale and how we improve staff morale. To ask staff to come back at night to a night meeting when they're off work to be recognized seems a little unfair to those staff people, but the same for all of the other people that I mentioned earlier who work daytime hours, who I think we want to respect. So how do we respect those people and recognize our staff at the same time, I think, is another answer we need before making any decision on this. Executive sessions before rather than after meetings provide for earlier answers before we vote on important issues. To sit here in a meeting and then have an executive session after we've voted for everything, after we've done all our business, seems to be backwards. We need to have executive sessions earlier and get information, find out what's going on so we don't delay things, and then we can make more informed decisions. So how do we factor the executive sessions in as we're doing them now compared to having to wait till the end of a meeting? Which we've also heard has held developers from testifying, and sometimes they're held here and then we don't even need them. And they've either had to make accommodations and hotel arrangements for the night or done something differently. Winding up here, it also allows time for and facilitates compromise between the public meeting in the afternoon and the final meeting at night so that some objections can be addressed, worked out, and we can move forward. And the last one, as Nebraska's third-largest city, Bellevue needs to more closely align practices with large, not smaller, cities. To say this is the way we've always done it and we can get by with it is not the way Lincoln does it, it's not the way Omaha does it. They have, Omaha has its meetings in the daytime, in the afternoon, and they have their pre-council meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning. And they've done that since I was the deputy city clerk for the city of Omaha back in the mid-'80s. So we shouldn't go backwards like the smaller cities. We need to be looking at what the larger cities are doing to be more effective. And so I think that's another factor we need to look at as we make a decision. I think it's too simplistic to say we should have a pre-council or we should not have a pre-council. I think we need to, we've identified, and these all came from a variety of people, we need to look at how do we address these issues and then find what we do with meetings to meet those needs. I think that's a much better approach, it's much more professional, and I think it's wiser. Thank you for your time and your listening.
Thank you, Councilwoman Blood.
I, I'm sorry, I can't hear someone's talking out there. Oh, there we go. It's, it's hard to follow that list because I agree with everything on that list. That was my concern from the very start, is that this is not a yes or no type of thing. I'm concerned that we're creating policy for the people who sit on the council now. I have no issue with changing the policy, I just want to make sure that we're changing it in a way that is productive. I call shenanigans on the fact that supposedly nobody young will run if we continue the council meetings the way it is. I know there's a 21-year-old sitting right there in the gallery who's going to be running for city council. And I also know that if you look, I'll use my race as an example, there are more people running now than there were 10 years ago. It used to be, we were lucky if we had two people running for a lot of the seats on the council, those of us that have been voting over the last few decades. And so it's really easy to point fingers and say this, this, and this, but the proof is in the pudding. Statistically, people are running for office. It's a sacrifice. Until October, if I had council on a Monday, then the next two days I'd have to work 10, 12-hour days to make up for the time that I missed. But I knew that that, that that was the case. When we presented pre-council meetings initially, this is not what we envisioned. We envisioned more of a work session, but we acquiesced and gave in because we felt the need to be very transparent. Open meetings, organizations encourage you to have discussions in a public forum. We certainly can call and talk to staff and then vote on it at the meeting that night, but that doesn't keep our citizens informed. It doesn't matter that citizens don't show up for pre-council. Pre-council meetings are televised and put on YouTube just like our council meeting is, and we're always going to have more people show up at council. But you know, when we've had hot-button issues, we've had a crowd at pre-council before, too. So I just want to make sure that we're not just conveniently changing the facts to influence others. I, I'm not against changes, but again, I'm, I support what Councilwoman Preister just said. We're, we're ignoring the positive comments we got from staff in reference to pre-council meetings, so we can't say that it's a burden on staff when they're telling us in writing that that is not the case. Can't say young people won't run because I know for a fact they are running. We can't say that people won't run because we have pre-council meetings because statistically there's more people running. Let's just make sure we're doing it for the right reasons and not just for the council that's sitting here now. Let's make sure that if indeed we do change it, we change it in a way that's going to be productive for the future and years to come. I just, I hate knee-jerk policy, and that's my biggest concern.
Mr. Burlowitz.
I guess I would echo some of the points that Councilmember Preister and Blood made. I think the element of the developer is a very critical element. Economic development is extremely competitive. The way you interact with prospect businesses is critical in establishing that relationship. They want to feel like they, obviously, they are important and that we're making every step possible to encourage them to make that decision to locate here or expand their business. We talked about staff. If this is changed, then I, or we talked to Councilmember Preister because we're reviewing the the policies of the council. Something then will need to be put in place so that there is a timeframe by which council members need to have questions into staff. As you've talked about freeing up staff time on Monday, but if they get a plethora of questions Monday morning from four council members, my staff will be spending all day Monday preparing answers that day for that council meeting. So we won't save any staff time if that happens. So those questions, it's going to put the monkey on the council to do their homework in time, and I'd even propose that probably council policy then be changed where questions need to be into staff by mid-morning on that Friday before council meeting. Because our role as staff and administration is to provide council the information you need to make good decisions. That's part of our role. And I don't want to be compromised where we don't have the time to do the proper research and put the time into it to provide that information that you need. The night of the meeting is too late, and I don't want to be put in a position where it looks like staff and administration doesn't have answers to questions because we can't anticipate every question you may ask. I know there's the thought that somehow we should know and be able to provide everything in advance that you need, but folks, we can't anticipate everything you're going to ask. So then you're going to have to commit to a timeframe to have those questions into us, and that'll allow us, and it puts the monkey on our back, obviously, to provide that information. From a personal standpoint, yes, it might free up some staff time on Mondays, but it is going to then take a commitment on the part of the staff away from their family's personal time. And I think that's something as an employer we need to be cognizant of, too. We're fringing up on personal lives for employees because I was not here at the time, you didn't, before you had pre-council, but as I understand, the retirements meetings went to 9:00 and 10:00 o'clock. That's probably at least going to be three hours, usually it'd be three hours longer potentially than what we spend now. It's not that staff's not willing to do that, but that is time that, yes, it may free them up during the day, but now they're having to extend their personal day and away from their families. So if something is implemented, then there needs to be a commitment both ways. We'll provide the information, but you need to have a timeframe that you at least agree to, to have those questions into us.
Mr. Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess my experience so far, as far as pre-council meetings are concerned, is that I've asked my colleague, Mr. Carmichael, is there anyone from the public out here? In most cases, it's just staff people that are here. Not so much people not wanting to run for the office because of the two Mondays every month, but more than that, I think at the pre-council meeting, a lot of issues are addressed by individuals and their questions are answered. By the time that you get to the regular council meeting, though, somebody might want to have, make a comment on something that was brought up, and it's just voted on right away. They're probably wondering what happened. Well, they weren't here. I mean, they're probably not watching it live on YouTube or anything like that to even know it. So in that case, you know, it's kind of redundant because I think those type of items, things are very important, we should be discussing it in public while the public is here, not while the public is not here, and then just voting it very quickly and have a real short meeting in the evening. As far as developers, I really don't see that as an issue, maybe somebody else does, but if I was coming in as a developer, I'd be probably working with members of the staff, the public works, the people that work on that development, a lot of those issues are all handled outside of maybe our council meeting. As far as questions, timely, I totally agree with Mr. Berlowitz that, you know, if I've got a question on public works, I can pick up the phone and call Mr. Roberts and say, well, who's going to mow that yard over here? I mean, that might not be an issue that you have, but it might be an issue that I have. So I don't know that, how that important, how important that is to really have to have everybody be aware of the question that I asked him. So I think that my most important thing is that there's nobody really here on those meetings, and then we have the regular meeting, and it just goes real quick and we're done with it. That's my opinion.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your comments on this, everybody. It's good to hear objective comments rather than criticism. I was fortunate enough to be an employee for the city for 25 years and witness council meetings that did not have pre-council meetings for a long time. As Councilman Preister said, excuse me, Preister, I'm sorry, sir, there are many issues that he brings up that have merit. There are many issues which I disagree with him respectfully on. I don't believe that the cost of employees goes up. You've changed the policy for exempt employees to go from showing up on the clock or showing up off the clock because they were paid a salary and they were obligated to be here to now paying them comp time. That was a decision that the administration made. The length of the meetings, I think that the length of the meetings will not be any longer. I think you're going to find that there's going, there's so much better communication that I see on this council in the year that I've been here than I saw before that, that I think that's the objective from my perspective, is that we have open communication amongst the council and amongst the staff prior to the meetings so that we get the answers that we need. Now, I've been chastised by Mr. Sullivan on numerous occasions for blatantly sending an email out to everybody, and I shouldn't do that, and I apologize for doing that, but I'm passionate about what I'm doing, and when I see something that I have a comment on, I want to get it to everybody as fast as possible. If we all do that, we're all going to have the same answers, even though we may not agree with them, as to how one of us feels or doesn't feel. Staff recognition, you bring that up. Don, that's a great, that's a great thing. Today, we had four, three employees and one employee that was promoted to a national board, which I think was just fantastic for the city. That's something I think we all need to discuss because I would take my personal time off to come down to be at a meeting like that, to recognize employees. Maybe it's once a month rather than every, or once every two weeks, I don't know. Executive sessions, I feel we have too many executive sessions already. I mean, we are representing the public, and that's part of the consternation that I have going through this entire process, is that in a year of being here, I bet I could count on two hands, the public that's been here, excluding a couple people that are always here. They don't hear the discussion that we have, they don't hear the discussion that the directors or the employees bring to us, and as Mr. Hanson says, we get to these meetings and we vote, and that discussion, which they very well may need to hear or want to hear, they don't get. They have to wait and watch it on TV after the meeting has occurred. It may jog someone's memory that makes them want to get up and talk to us and say something that would change our minds. We represent the people. Eligible young voters, I work in another jurisdiction, so I have to take time off to come and be at the pre-council meetings, and I have made everyone excluding one because I had important business to take care of over there. I'm a grandfather now, I have five grandchildren. I firmly believe that if I was a young parent with children and I had to work in order to make sure I had a home for my children and my wife, that I would not have been able to participate in this. I knew, I know I wouldn't have been able to, because it's more important for me as a responsible adult and father to make a living for my family than it would have been to come here and serve my community. Now, maybe there are 21-year-olds that can do that right now, I don't know that they can or can't, but during the daytime, there's an obligation, you have your family to work. At night, when you're off work, if you can afford to be away from your family and come be a council person, boy, I think that'd be a wonderful thing for everybody. You're eligible to run for council when you turn 18 and you can vote. That'd be a great thing. Really, that's the premise of why I brought this forward. I feel like we can do the citizens as good, if not a better service, by having just the meetings in the evening when everyone has an opportunity to be here. And I, that's why I brought it forward, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Carmichael. Ms. Councilwoman Blood.
I just want to tweak one more statistic. We keep talking about how more people come at night, but you know, statistically, there is less than 1/10th of percent of the population of Bellevue that comes at night. The bottom line is people in general really are apathetic. The people that usually do come are people that are against something, it's pretty rare when we have people come in favor of something. The groups that we will see in the gallery are based on what the hot topic issues happen to be. You had a neighborhood that doesn't want something in their backyard, or somebody who doesn't like how an ordinance personally affects them. I just, I just want to make sure that what we say is statistically correct, and it's statistically less than 1/10th of percent of our population. I don't even know, I'm not good enough at math to say even what the true percentage is, but when you think about how many voters there are in Bellevue, how many residents there are in Bellevue, and how we have this open forum and have for decades on the second and fourth Monday of every month, this is all that show up. And we're saying we want to be available to the public, only, the public only comes at night. Well, the public doesn't come at all, and it's really unfortunate. So let's just get that demographic correct, I just want to make sure that we say that.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the discussion, it was good, it's good that we talk about it. I don't have a problem, I'm not wedded to having a pre-council meeting, but I see advantages. And I go back to what Dan said in terms of, we have to provide a mechanism so we commit to getting staff our questions early and we share those. Not in one big group, but we can email them to two people at a time. So we need, as a council, to make some decisions, and I think this list, it's not my list, this is the list, that we collectively did, and it was a team effort, and I thank everybody for their contributions. So if we can find solutions to these things, it's much easier to make a determination on what we do for a meeting. The meeting, to me, isn't the issue. How do we best serve the city? How do we meet all of these needs? And I welcome, I mean, this is a team effort again, how do we find some alternatives to all these things so we can meet as many of those needs and be as efficient and effective as we can? And I look forward to working with everybody to come to some agreement on what we can do. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or concerns? C, none. Third and final reading will be on Monday, April 13. Item number 10, ordinance for deduction, first reading, none. 11, public hearing on matters other than ordinance, none. 12, resolutions, none. 13, current business. 13A, B, and C is under consent. 13D, approve request to purchase NJPA contract-priced portable bypass pump for the amount of Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to approve the request to purchase NJP contract-priced portable bypass pump in the amount of $45,493.
Second.
Second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? C, none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. E, approve the professional service agreement with HGM Associates, Inc. for the trail and park master plan designed service at American Heroes, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement including the E-Verify. Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the professional service agreement with HGM Associates, Inc. for trail and park master plan design services at American Heroes Park, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement including E-Verify addendum.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? C, none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. F, request permission to award HDR and study the design contract in an amount not to exceed $32,700 for the abandonment of the SID-20 lift station, and authorize the mayor to sign including the E-Verify addendum. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the request for permission to award HDR the study and design contract in an amount not to exceed $32,750 for the abandonment of the SID-20 lift station, and authorize the mayor to sign including E-Verify addendum.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Mr. Cook.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I had one person ask me a question, SID-20, and Epiphany, you probably could sit there, you could nod. From my understanding, they were asking, well, is the SID paying for that? And then I looked it up, and it's, the SID has been annexed, so this is our lift station.
Yes, it's just nomenclature, that's kind of what's followed through years and years from annexation, but it is ours and we have the.
I think seeing the SID-20, they were thinking, why is this SID not participating?
Yeah, no, it's completely annexed, yeah.
That annex, that is annexed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Modri.
Epiphany, another question.
Sure.
This is annotated as not being in the budget. Can you speak about that and what kind of savings this will bring to us?
Absolutely. Basically, the SID-20 lift station is completely past its useful life, it probably should have been in the SIP many years ago. The force main that's connected to that is in a pretty state of needing, it's probably about 60% been patched, and it pretty much needs a complete overhaul. I believe just as recent as two years ago, we had some pretty emergent situations where we had a collapse on that force main. So to get it back to operational standards, we're talking, you know, a large amount of money that's replacing that force main and updating that lift station altogether. I believe it hadn't been done in the past because the owners of property where we're going to have to purchase some easements on, maybe weren't keen on that idea. So now we've had some transfers of ownership, years have passed, and now it's really an opportune moment with moving forward with completely abandoning that lift station and turning it into a gravity system. And what that means is we're not going to have to have any of those long-term maintenance issues with, we would, that we would with maintaining a lift station and a pressurized main. We're just going to gravity it back into our system. So it has about a five-to-seven-year return on our investment. Basically, what that means is what it costs us upfront to install this new grav, basically take care, take care of this system, will pay for itself in about five to seven years in terms of the maintenance, overall maintenance to that pressurized main and lift station. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions for Epiphany? Thank you. I believe we had a, we have a motion and a second, correct? So this is discussion, any further discussion? C, none, please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. 12G, presentation of the auditor's report and financial statements for the year-end September 30, 2014, and the acceptance by the city council. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Mark Sipker, I'm the Finance, Compliance, and Control Manager, and I'm here today because Rich is home ill. And so I talked to him on the phone, and he sounds horrible. And I also have with me Mark Myers, who's also a finance manager, we both report to Rich. And so I guess what I'd like to do is introduce Robin DeVore. Robin is the partner in charge for BKD for the audit, let her talk about the audit, and then after that, I'll come back up, make a few comments. I also want to give Paul Cook an opportunity as a representative of the Audit Committee to make some comments, and then Mark and I will also be available for any questions. Robin?
Thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. As Mark indicated, we did meet with your Audit Committee last week, and so we went through the audit in a fair amount of detail with them. I'm just going to cover some highlights for you and then hopefully answer any questions that you may have. We did issue an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and that says that in our opinion, we felt like the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects, and that is the type of opinion that you do want to receive. Again, this year in the financial statements, you'll note that at the beginning in pages three through 13, management did include their management's discussion and analysis. This is where they kind of give you a feel for what happened during the year, kind of explain some of the major changes in the financial statements. As far as new or unusual things in the financial statements, I will point out that during fiscal year 14, there was a new accounting standard that was adopted. It related to items that used to be classified as assets or liabilities. For the most part, those items were just moved around on the statement of net position and the balance sheet, but there was one item, bond issuance costs, you know, when you issue bonds, there are underwriters fees, attorneys fees, those types of things, that in the past, those have been capitalized and amortized over the life of the bonds. This standard says, no, those are expenses at the time of the issuance. So anything that the city had been carrying as an asset has been written off, and that was about $700,000, so that decreased your net position last year. Other highlights, there's a new note related to the assignment of cell tower rents, and I will point out the sale of Course Lab is included in there, some of the revenue going into community betterment and some of it going into the general fund. Overall, when you look at the financial statements, there was, at the government-wide level, there was a decrease in net position, but when you look at the fund level, there was an increase in your unassigned fund balance, and that's a positive trend that you want to see. That unassigned fund balance increased from about $1.4 million last year to $5.1 million this year. That's about 12% of the general fund expense. That's about 12% of the general fund expenditures. Target is going to be somewhere between 25 and 50%. So, you're getting there. It's a positive increase, but want to continue to see that number grow. We did also look at your federal programs. Specifically, we looked at CDBG and the SAFER grant. We audited compliance, and we did not have any findings related to compliance or internal control over compliance for those two programs. We did have two internal control findings. The first one relates to drafting the financial statements and audit adjustments. For those of you who've been on the council, you've seen that before. In the past, we have classified that as a material weakness, which is the most severe level of internal control deficiency. This year, we classified that as a significant deficiency. So, that's a step down. And that's because in the finance department, they provided us significant more assistance than prior years. They identified a lot more of the adjustments, and we felt like there was an improvement in that process. So, we felt like that it was not as severe as a deficiency as it had been in the past. The other item related to internal controls over the billing process for rescue fees, we felt like there is a segregation of duties issued there, that there was not sufficient monitoring over that process, and so we made some recommendations related to that process as well. The other item that you have is our governance letter. That walks through what our responsibilities are as auditors, talks about where there are significant estimates in the financial statement, talks about some of the adjustments that we proposed, some that were made, some that were not made, and then at the very end includes just some suggestions for best practices. Does anyone have any questions?
Mr. Preister.
Just to thank you, I appreciate the information. There's a lot of detail, a lot of information in there. It's also available to the public. It's on our website, so if anybody has an interest, I think it's a very open process and having outside auditing to assess the current practices and give us those recommendations is very good, and I appreciate the involvement and your firm's work on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, and we appreciate all the help from everyone at the city as well.
Mr. Cook.
Just a couple of quick comments. The Audit Committee did meet. It includes Dave Sanborn, a former City Council member, Jerry Blasek, he, I believe he's in the finance at Bellevue University. Robin and our staff did present it, and we did, we discussed many of the items in there. It's very interesting to be in a room with four CPAs when you're not one. So, I'm not an expert here, but it just seemed as the conversation went on, there was a lot of positive things. And one of the questions that I asked Robin was, you know, where we were at last year, maybe some of our deficiencies where we're at this year, and the impression that I got was we are sitting in a little bit better position. We hired a new employee, Mark, in December? Is it October? October? We did not get a, have not had a full year. I believe when the audit people came in, I think they were, provided more material and, and things went a lot smoother. So, the Audit Committee did accept the report, and I would like to make a motion when it's time to accept the audit, but I have not had anybody ask me to do this, but I think this is so important, what, what has transpired here in our financial position and where we're at. I would like to make a motion for public input. I, I don't know if anybody wants to speak, but I'd like to make a motion. No one's asked to speak, but I just think as critical as this is, if there's someone sitting here today, I'd like to give them an opportunity to speak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Modri. Any discussion? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. There's anyone that would like to speak on this item? Please do so.
Chuck Frederick, 1511 Madison Street. As you know, I was not in favor of having the same auditing firm for five years. I already have talked to you people about having the state auditor do the state audit, do the audit this year for the city of Bellevue. I think we need transparency, we need a new, new set of eyes to look at it. And then, from that point on, then the same auditing firm that you have right now can just move forward to five years. And I see no reason not to do that. It won't cost any more money, and we'll have, we'll have the state do it and just see how it comes out. I think that's, that's transparency, just not having the same firm do it five years in a row. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
Yes, Mayor. I, I just want to point out that originally when I came onto the council, I was one of those people that, I hate to say this, agreed with Chuck Frederick. Because Chuck, it's not your turn to talk. I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't mean to do your job. And then, I started seeing the benefits of working with this, this professional organization. And then they also brought us forward a really great contract that saved the taxpayers a substantial amount of money. Additionally, when we talk about transparency, transparency isn't one person's interpretation of the word. Transparency is making our information available to the public, which we always do. We have a transparency policy. I believe Councilwoman Preister and I were the only two on the council at the time when that was passed, because we believe in making information available to the public. You can't get more transparent than giving everybody verbatim what's available to the council. Additionally, we have the committee that Councilwoman Cook sits on. We have Councilwoman Cook, we have Councilwoman Sanborn, and for those of you who may not remember Councilwoman Sanborn, if something was not up to snuff, he would be the first person that would be standing at this podium letting us know that. And so, I, I feel sorry for BKD. I was one of the people that picked on you originally, and I, for that, I apologize. You have done an exceptional job. Our staff has done an exceptional job. If you looked at what our finances were when we came onto the council, good grief. Taxpayers should be thrilled with the work that Rich has done and that Mark has done. I am proud of our finance department, and I hate that I still have to sit here, council meeting after council meeting, listening to particular people tear the work that they do down because they work their, excuse my mouth, butts off. This is transparent, this is accurate, this is an excellent job, and I'm embarrassed that BKD has to sit here and listen to inappropriate things being said at the podium. This is a good audit. Bellevue should be proud. I'm proud of our staff, I'm proud of the work that Paul Cook's committee does, Councilwoman Cook's committee does, and we have come a long, long way financially. We get better and better and better. And one of the reasons we're getting better is the consistency that we're getting from BKD.
Are there others that would like to say a few words? We have Mr. Mark Sepker that would like to say a few words, please.
Thank you. Well, first of all, I want to thank the council and the administration for their very kind and gracious comments. We, we do work hard to provide quality services to the city, and I've been here since 2011. And I guess the thing that I find rewarding is that each year, we've taken that bar a little bit higher, and we're not done. We have more to do, and, but we're, we're keeping our eye on the ball, and we're on the road of continuous improvement. I also wanted to take an opportunity to thank BKD. They are an excellent firm, they make us work hard, and they should, and that results in a better audit and a more accurate audit. So, they ask the hard questions, and we work hard to give them the right answers. And then, I know Rich isn't here tonight, but I know he does appreciate the work of the staff, and he's told us that. And so, he has shared his appreciation with us, and, and we thank him for his leadership, and, and we're glad to get another audit under our belts, so.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to also thank you for your, for your work, what you do. I'm appreciative of this audit and the information that it gives us and that it gives the public. It's very valuable. It brings up a number of things that, as we go into the budgeting process, we need to be very cognizant of, taking into consideration as we're laying out that budget. You know, there's, it shows they're going to have a big spike in general obligation bonds, other bonds and such, you know, in the 2020, 2024 period. Shows our unfunded liabilities for, particularly on the police pensions. Percentage keeps going up every year. Need to, you know, keep that in mind, make sure that we have realistic assumptions on what the return rates are going to be as we negotiate contracts down the road and other things, and as we plan for our budgeting of those items. Other post-employment benefit costs as well, those obligations are continuing to go up. So, it gives us a lot of valuable information that we'll need to consider as we look at the budget and take a realistic look what those costs are going to be for us, not now, but well into the future. Take those into consideration, so, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to highlight too, I think Rich deserves a lot of credit, and he did a very good job of selecting you and the other employees that he hired in the department and maintaining the ones that are still there. So, you have my support as well. A couple of comments, and, and I agree with Councilwoman Modri. We need to use this as a stepping stone to our upcoming budget, and we're going to have some real challenges. So, as we move in that direction, one of my concerns is the bonded indebtedness. I appreciate that we have refinanced. We have increased only by $170,000, which is pretty good, and I like that because at this point, we've got lots of needs and we have low interest. So, it really is a tempting and a good time to bond, and we get it cheaper than probably if we held off and had to pay higher costs in the future. So, balancing that is important. But the part I note on that is that by refinancing, we saved $168,000. So, essentially, it's a wash, and I think that's part of good management. So, I appreciate that. Just send up the same caution. I just personally don't like debt. I like to pay as I go. I don't like to pay interest to anybody, and I like to run the city that way as best we can, too. The other thing I want to highlight is in the capital assets, we've increased a number of things. But I just want to stress that the new items placed in service in that don't all mean that we spent taxpayer dollars for doing it. An example, there's a million dollars in there for American Heroes Park. I know that our foundation spent money buying part of that for the new aeration system that we have in the lake. So, it wasn't just taxpayer dollars. I know that the rose garden is maintained by Green Bellevue and by one of our volunteers, Joanne Langaby, at no cost. All those roses, all that. I'm guessing over the life of that, it's probably close to $100,000. So, we have capitalized these assets, but that doesn't mean that that base, how much we value them, was actually taxpayer dollars going into it. And you can comment, but I just, I wanted to bring that up. And I also wanted to comment on the deficiencies, because we hired Mark Myers as one of our new staff to address some of those efficiencies, and if we do these deficiencies, essentially it means paying more money to be able to provide more input for an auditor, whether that's a hired private auditor or whether that's our, our state auditor. If we meet this deficiency even more, it probably means another staff member. And I was, sorry, Mark, but I was reluctant to add that additional staff position because I could live with that deficiency. So, if our deficiencies are not such serious deficiencies, I want that to be known, and I don't think this is that serious a deficiency. And I think we have moved more and more in the best direction of accountability to the taxpayers, and I give your director, Rich Severson, and you, and all the staff credit for that. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Surprise. Point well taken in regard to the long-range forecasting. I think I mentioned earlier one thing about with the banning of budget and with the additional staff that we now have and the capabilities, we are working more and more to do that long-range forecasting further out. And granted, you know, five years beyond gets a little fuzzy, but we're starting to do that long-range forecasting because we have to look at growth issues, we have to look at obsolescence and maintenance issues of our infrastructure. We do look at, even this year, an example of where we didn't bond a project. We originally planned to bond it, but we were in a position from a cash standpoint with, in the wastewater department, to cash, cash flow it, and that was on the Fontana Hills Lift Station. That was a three-quarter million dollar project, which we originally planned to bond, but we didn't. So, we do look at the pluses, the pros and cons of where we can avoid issuing debt and, and where it makes sense. The good thing, and again, I totally advocate the thing regarding avoiding taking on more debt when we need to, we are sitting very well in terms of what's deemed to be an acceptable percentage of a debt ratio. In fact, we're way below what we are because it's based upon our, you know, our total, looks at our tax base total on that, and so, that based upon, we're, we're in good shape. But staff is doing a very good job, and again, now that we have additional people on board, you're right, there are certain things we have to determine whether it's more cost-effective to do it ourselves or to farm it out, and that's another, that's something else that we're continually evaluating, too.
Mr. Cook.
Just a couple of real quick things. Jim, you bring up a very good point about some obligations, and I think they're big obligations. I think they have to be looked at and considered when we get deeper into the budget for the following two years. I look at it as, you know, we've kicked the ball down the street and it's rolling, and now we've got to make sure that we, you know, can budget for it and, and can hopefully keep things going in a very positive direction. I'm very satisfied with this report. You know, at the meeting, Dan was there, Rich was there, Mark, Marc, Marcy, I and the two committees, other members, and I, to me, there was just no red flags thrown up. I'm not in account, so some of this is over my head, but I, I was very satisfied, and it all comes back to the work, including Rob, there's Robin, all the work that all, everybody has done. So, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the audit.
Second.
The public hearing is still open, so if there are no others that would like to comment on this item, I see none. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Mr. Cook, you have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the audit.
Second.
A second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? C, none, please vote. Do we have everyone?
All voted yes.
Thank you. I appreciate you coming in today, Mark. I know you were sick, too, so, thank you for all your hard work. Thank you, Robin. Item 12H, approval of newly-written and update employee handbook.
Here, I'd like to have some discussion with some possible motions.
Okay.
We do have HR stamp here.
Okay. So, do we need to open this for public hearing?
No.
Okay. Mr. Cook.
Ashley and Karen, Angela, I, I'm just going to throw some things out, and if you would quick comment to me. One of the things that we discussed was the HIPAA, and you gave a very good explanation why we have shortened it. I just want to make sure that, one of the things we talked about is the requirements from the federal government of new employees, having them have, I think what was mentioned, that at least every three years, they are updated with the information that's available on the internet. And, and I know it doesn't mention in the policy, but we are happy that that will be done. That it would be something within maybe an in-house SOP that that would be done, because I think there was a concern that maybe that has not been done in the past.
Right, that's not been the case currently. We're not doing any annual or training that we should have been doing as far as HIPAA is concerned. I think the section that was in the old employee manual was meant to be a sort of the notification to meet those requirements, but that just wasn't enough. So, we kind of took all of that out, mentioned that we'll provide that training, and we will be providing that training for our employees.
And the thought was that it would not need to be in the handbook, but it would be internal policy and then be done.
Yes.
One of the things on job postings, our previous, I'm on page 21 if anybody's going through the agenda on their laptop. On page 21... On page twenty-one, we, we've made a significant change on our job postings and promotions. And it says the city believes in providing its employees with promotion opportunities and will normally post job vacancies internally. And I, I just think that as a city, as a government, that the policy should say that we shall post jobs. I believe we have a lot of internal candidates that would be excellent supervisors and managers. And I hope that we would take the time to train them, maybe job shadow them, and provide other things to them that would make them probably a very well-qualified person for, say, a promotion. I think when we get into that we will normally post, I, I just think we're going to run into a problem. I, I believe as a government entity, I believe our, our responsibility to, to our citizens is that we should post jobs. I don't know if you want to give any input, but that is going to be a, a motion that I will make. I, I just think that's too critical. An employee internally looking at maybe a lateral move into another department or a promotion, I think that person has enough opportunity to get that job and would probably be a very good candidate, but I think we still have an obligation to our citizens to post job openings.
Sure. I'll give a little bit of input. Our thought behind the change in that is that employees, as well as external candidates, are all afforded the same applicant rights, whether we post internally, externally, or at the same time. Requiring that we post internally kind of ties our hands when we need to fill a position quickly. It takes that process and just kind of drags it out a little bit longer. So it's not saying that we won't post internally. It's just giving us more opportunity to meet the needs.
I guess part of my concern is that, you know, it just says the city, you know, when it talks about vacancies internally or externally, we're just saying that we, to me, you're saying we might post it, we might not. It just depends on the circumstance, and I think we should.
Councilwoman Blood.
But the way I read it is that if indeed I were an employee and you posted this externally, there would be nothing that prevents me from applying for that job.
Correct, yes.
Oh, no.
So it doesn't really, it's, it's just basically wording. It doesn't really change the meaning. And then what would happen as a result? Any employee could still apply for it.
But I'm also looking at external candidates, having an opportunity to apply for city positions. And what I believe is that we should, we should post all our job and promotions just as a government entity to allow anybody to apply for them.
But, and, and I don't want to bicker, but that's what it says.
And just from an HR standpoint, the best qualified candidate, whether internal, external, is going to be the person that gets the position. So the avenue in which we post the job is less important.
But is this policy saying that we will post all job vacancies and promotional opportunities internally and externally?
It's saying neither.
It's what?
It's saying we'll post it however we see fit.
I'm not hearing what you're saying.
It's saying we'll post it however we see fit, based on the job.
However we see fit.
It just doesn't require the city to post internally prior to posting externally. And like Councilwoman Blood said, if it's posted externally, anybody, including a city employee, can apply for it. So it's just giving HR the discretion to, to determine the best way to do it, but at the same time, every applicant is considered and the best candidate will be hired.
But you're saying if it's posted, then, well, I don't know, I, I, I just feel that I'd like to make a motion, I don't know when that would be, later after all the discussion? I, I would just like it to say that we shall post all vacancies and promotions for external, internal candidates.
Councilwoman Blood.
The way it's written, do we fall under the, the federal guidelines that we're required to fall under when it comes to the hiring process?
That's a resounding head shake, yes.
So, all right.
Why don't we go over each of your changes on?
Steve might have a comment.
And then figure out how to do your motion to amend.
Mr. Carmichael.
Thank you, Mayor. It doesn't say you're not going to post the job. You're going to post the job, whether it's for everybody or you might post it internally.
Right, it just gives us more flexibility to post it externally if we need to.
All right. I just, I, just when I read it, and I, you know, just when I read it, that's, it just seemed like we were going to do it.
No, it's still requiring the posting of a job and you still have to post the job whether internal, external, before you hire.
Okay.
And frequently, the department head will make a recommendation which way they'd like to go first with that, too, so we take that under consideration as well.
All right. On, on page twenty-three, personnel records. I, I'm not, there's, there's been a change made in blue, blue ink, and I'm, I'm, I've just, it says, "Any outside entities will be required to sign an access log when viewing an employee file." Now, in, in brackets, it says, "Non-personnel staff, union representative, the employer, or other outside entities." I believe that any employee or anybody that gets into a file, that, don't we have a personnel access log sheet?
There is one.
And I guess my thought is, is that if, if someone's going to get in there to review it or make copies, is that being completed? And I don't want to make a burden on your staff to say, what I think is filing of documents, I don't think that would probably be completed, that log, you know, if you're just going to put stuff in there. But I think any other time someone gets in a, a personnel file, it should be properly documented on that log. And I, I'm taking this as that's not what it's saying. Maybe I misread it, but that's what I'm taking it as. And, and what, what generated this, and I'll read, I'll read this to you. This is something we got from an individual. And it was an email sent to us, and it just says, now, this is a person saying it that I believe used to work here. And he's saying this happened within the last year of, of their employment here. It says, "Is it a senior-level employee's responsibility to make sure employee files are kept confidential? And if someone has to have access to them, they must sign the personnel file access log." Within the last, past year, I was the only one signing the log, except when I asked the employee, an employee in your area to sign the log to show I received copies of it. So he's trying to tell me that in a, like a four-month period, this is what happened. He signed it, and now here's what happened thereafter. Since signing the log, an email from my boss appeared in my file. No one in HR knew how it got there. There was no date stamped, nor was it signed. He goes on and says, "My supervisor was asked if they put this email in my file, and they stated they did not put the email in my file. They did not give the email to anyone to put in my file, nor do they know anyone in HR who put the email in my file." So he's saying that this was not signed. So how did, how did, how did it get into my file? And then nobody signed that personnel file access log. And then he refers to a second situation that says sometime after that incident, a letter I wrote appeared in my file. I began questioning how a copy of my letter ended up in my file. A few days later, employees sent an email and stated it was a mistake and thought it should be in my file. He, he says, "Nobody signed my file. The document wasn't stamped. The employee stated they got the letter back and no one in HR made a copy of it. How can this happen?" So in this case, he's saying someone came in there and put something in my file, and then it was removed and there was nothing there.
Yeah. Without getting into any specifics, we've already addressed this specific issue. And his statements that were made in that letter are completely misleading in the sense that asking one employee in the HR staff if they knew who put it in there and they say no, doesn't constitute that nobody in HR knew how it got in there. Because it was very well-known how the file, it got in there.
I think he, his comment was just, you know, there was nothing on that log. I'm not questioning.
And that was a filing issue. And so that negates what you said about not signing it when we're filing. It's, it's completely impractical to say that we're going to sign an access log every time we place a document into a file.
And I wouldn't expect that.
Councilwoman Blood.
Pat, is it appropriate legally that we're discussing somebody's HR file in a public forum without that employee or ex-employee being here?
I don't.
I, I'm not comfortable with this.
I, I, I think they have been sufficiently vague that it hasn't risen to any problem.
Yeah. Carol.
I, I, if, who is this person?
Carol, I intentionally did not want to bring that name up or the dates or the times.
Then I'm not comfortable hearing, and, and I know I sound like I'm being resistant to what you're saying, which I kind of am. The information isn't valuable if that person's not willing to come and speak. Even if that person was willing to come and speak, I, I'm sorry, but I'm not personally comfortable discussing someone's HR file in a public forum. I think that's inappropriate. And I think, Pat, I disagree with you. I think we could get in trouble for it. And I know I'm not an attorney, but we've gotten in trouble for dumber things.
Mayor, if I could address the policy?
Please.
The, and to answer Councilmember Cook's question, the way this personnel records policy is written now, including the blue-red line version, it essentially requires anyone outside of the personnel and HR department to sign that access log. So personnel department won't be signing it, but anybody else, including the employee or union representative, will be signing that access log.
Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I appreciate that Councilman Cook is raising questions and issues, but I, I also am concerned that an accusation from an email is being posed as our staff is incompetent or something to that effect. And anyone watching this on television, who may not catch the reply we just had, thinks that we're not following through and we're not being effective in our jobs. So this is a kind of question that if, if it's already been addressed, if it's a non-issue, if it's an accusation only, I think it's better not brought up in a public forum. I mean, I appreciate that you're looking at this closely, but an accusation here that is unfounded and has a good answer for, should be done in private and you get the answer and we move on. To do it in public and to leave the public with that kind of an impression makes Bellevue look bad, and I feel badly for us for that. I'm not criticizing you.
Well, I, I will apologize. It was just something that was presented and I just figured. I, I did meet with some of the staff and, and, you know, we, we did discuss some of this stuff and, and I just felt that I did not get the answer that I thought was appropriate. So I, there was no intent to dig into anybody's thing. That's why I left dates and names and events out. It was just sort of, sort of to show that if this has occurred, has occurred, you know, I'm satisfied with them saying that anybody that gets in there, except them, will record their name on and stuff, action on that file.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. My, my question was, I think you may have just answered a little bit ago, but from the wording here, then you take it that anybody really outside of personnel staff would, would sign that they have accessed the files? That would include the individual supervisor or anything else? Okay. It, it doesn't kind of specifically say that in the IE portion of it, but. All right. Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
Yes. I, I did not bring this up. Page twenty-four, on Q, the fourth paragraph. And it's just a wording. I just want clarification and ask if this is, it says, "Such payouts will be available in the event of their resignation or retirement in good standing or both." And I don't know what good standing means. You know, it, does it involve a suspension or, you know, your, what, you were received on a personal, say, evaluation or a management evaluation? I guess what I'm asking is, is this standard? Because I, I know we didn't talk about it. I just caught it. But is this standard in other, in our current contracts? Are we see, are we putting this in all the contracts so this would pretty much cover all employees?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Councilwoman Blood.
Can you tell me a little bit about your HR background? What, how you came to Bellevue?
Sure. I started my career in the manufacturing industry. I worked for Omaha Standard for several years. From there, I went to Nebraska Engineering Company, and I was there for several years. And from there, I went into banking, and I was the HR manager for Pinnacle Bank in Omaha. I was the HR manager for roughly two-hundred-and-twenty-seven bank branches in ten different states. So I got a wide variety of my background from the professional industry, and now I've moved into the public sector, so.
And what is your degree in, please?
HR management.
And is it a master's?
It's a bachelor's.
A bachelor's? So what, combined, how many years have you been doing this?
Four years. I also have my Senior Professional Human Resources Certification, which is a nationally-accredited exam that I have to, you take, you sit for, obviously, the exam and keep up recertification on.
And so a little history that you may not know is that prior to many of these people coming on the council, and then once they came on, they supported it. I give them kudos for that. We pushed, pushed, pushed to have you on board because one of the issues that we saw an area of weakness for the city of Bellevue is that we were constantly being sued over silly employment issues because we had poor HR policy. We basically had no HR policy. We had no paper trail. We had, it, it was bad for the employees, it was bad for the citizens, it was bad for the administration, all the way around. And so we brought you on board and City Administrator Dan Burlowitz to, to tighten things up. And because of that, the lawsuits have severely dropped. We have happier staff. And now you're just basically trying to, to deal with one of the biggest issues that we've had for years, which is to get the HR manual up to date. And this wasn't our first attempt at it. It was poorly attempted prior to you coming. But thank goodness, we have you on board and Dan Burlowitz and the rest of the council's been pushing for this. I just want to make sure we put this in perspective, is that you're doing the job that we asked you to do, and you've done an exceptional job, and for that, I thank you.
Just as a statement, I'm, I mean, we can go through, I mean, we've talked about a lot of the issues that you have concerns about, but it's, it's a solid manual. It's one that'll protect us as a city. It's one that will protect our employees as individuals, and it's something that I'm very confident in.
Thank you. On page twenty-nine, the DUI and disciplinary action. One of the things, a question that I asked, asked you and sort of got two different answers, and maybe, maybe you can explain to me. I simply asked if, if this policy pertained to all employees. And so employees, Angela, I think you said you would do some little bit more research and checking, because I think we were concerned. My question was, does it, you know, employees that don't have a requirement to drive a vehicle versus someone that has to drive a vehicle versus someone driving a CDL? And you said you would dig into it further and let me know? So do you, I guess my question to you is simply, do you feel that this policy pertains to all city employees?
Well, on page twenty-nine, section three, it specifically states that any employee required by his or her respective position to have and maintain an operator's license and/or a CDL and is convicted will be subject to disciplinary action as outlined in section four. So I think that it, the handbook itself is already clear as to whom this policy provision applies to.
But you're saying just people that are required to have those things? I, I guess then the first sentence in that thing says, "Any city employee notifies," and then it mentions, I think there was just an issue as far as how it was being said, and I thought you were going to work on it and maybe clear it up. And when I got it, I didn't see any changes or any.
Yeah. The sent, the first sentence is just saying that any city employee is required to notify their supervisor if they have gotten a DUI or DWI.
And the notification requirement is basically because we do have city-owned vehicles that have restrictions for drivers based on things like that. So that's why we require notification by all employees.
And I do think you kind of have to read the, the section together with page thirty-two, which goes into the city-owned vehicle policy. And you kind of have to realize, you know, who you're talking about, when. I think it, it is clear in the article that the disciplinary action provision applies to those employees who are required to have an op- that the disciplinary action provision applies to those employees who are required to have an operator's license or CDL. And on page thirty-two, I think it's clear that that provision applies to anybody who's actually operating a city vehicle, whether, you know, obviously they'd be required to have their CDL or operator's license, but if they're actually in the act of operating, that's when that policy would come into place.
And the, the reason why I bring this up, when I asked that question at our meeting, I sorta got a yes answer and a no answer. And you just mentioned that you would check into it further. Yes.
What, Mr. Modri?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I had a little confusion on this too, I'm, I'm sorry. But in, in paragraph three there, you know, it says that, that section four applies for those with a CDL or, you know, a commercial driver's license. But in section four, then, the first sentence says any employee that violates any provision of the city's drug alcohol-free workplace policy is subject to disciplinary action up to and including termination. So does that apply to all employees then, that, just that, that sentence?
Right, that does, that would be any employee, but with that being said, we wouldn't discipline an employee without grounds for doing so, so.
Right, 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 but, okay. By the way, is a provision for any employee, discipline up to and including? Okay.
Councilwoman Blood.
And I think it's really clear, because then the next sentence is, and the circumstances of the case. I think we keep nitpicking small sentences and not looking at the document as a whole. I mean, if you keep reading and, or you, you carry on to several pages later, I think it's very self-explanatory. It looks like most HR manuals that I've seen in the, over the last two decades.
And if one of those circumstances is that you're required to have the CDL, then that comes into play at that point in time.
That's a state statute, that's something that we're required to comply with.
On page thirty, um, the fourth paragraph, um, says the employee, uh, page thirty, the fourth paragraph, the last sentence, the employee will waive all rights to contest any termin- termination resulting from a violation of the last chance agreement. Now, I realize you gotta read the whole paragraph, but I, I just, I'm, I, I don't know if having an employee waive their rights, I, I probably gonna have a problem with that. I just think that we just deal with what is presented, you know, did they go to rehabilitation, did they complete it properly? Did they get maybe additional DUIs? I, I just hate to shut off an avenue for an employee to be able to go through the process of trying to take advantage of any of his rights.
If you.
Councilwoman Blood.
I, I'm sorry, I don't mean to do your. But that, that specific paragraph talks to a last chance employee, you're not talking about, oops, I just got a DUI. It's, oops, I'm on my third one, and not only did I lose my driver's license, but I'm not gonna get it back for five years.
Well, I agree, Carol, I agree with what you're saying. The last chance, if, 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 if you're put on the last chance and you get another DUI, you'll be subject to termination. But you can continue to get those, now eventually there'll be a decision made. I don't know if it's gonna be the second one, or the third one, or fourth one, we talked about maybe trying to bring this together, a little bit of what the state says, how far back do they look at DUIs? The policy says, you know, if, if you're working, you leave, you come back to the job. You know, part of my concern is if I'm twenty-one years old and I get a DUI and I come back, and now I'm forty-six years old and I get, you know, I. So, what I'm saying is, as this process plays out, I just, i- if you're on the last chance agreement and you still get a drunk driving, you're still only subject to termination, it doesn't say you shall be terminated. So I'm saying if, is if, I don't wanna waive someone's rights, I just think that it's appropriate for them to still have their rights to the following, to have the hearings and, and, and for it to play out. It could be their second, third, or fourth DUI.
I, I guess I don't read it as saying that they've lost those rights, and, and indeed, if they do have a drinking problem, they're also protected as a person with a disability, to a certain extent. But I, I'm not an attorney, but I know a little bit about HR stuff, cause I've had to deal with it. I, I, I read it differently than you do. I, I think it's interesting how we can read the same paragraph and get different things out of it.
Kinda just add to this, this is a, a topic that we spoke about with Mr. Modri as well, and I think he is gonna propose an amendment that we have kind of all agreed upon to put a limitation on this. Uh, we're going to put a ten-year limitation, propose putting a ten-year limitation into the last chance agreement, so. For example, the example you gave, someone that's twenty-one and would come back at forty, that obviously would not apply. The last chance agreement wouldn't still be in standing.
Okay, and I know we talked about that, that was a concern.
Mr. Preister.
Sorry to interject, but while we're on this topic, if someone's getting DUIs at twenty-one, and at forty-six, they haven't grown up and they're still getting DUIs, I have to question, is ten years appropriate? I mean, if, if they haven't matured in those ten years and they still have the problem, I think they have a disability, I think they have a disease, I think they need help. And do we enable that by giving them more chances? I, I'm questioning a ten-year requirement. I'm not su- I'm just hearing that now, and I don't, I don't know that that's a good idea.
The pol- I mean, the policy was written in a way that we felt was best suited for the city. I was just stating that that was an option that was being.
Hold on, I think, Angela.
Yeah, if I may, the, kind of some background for this provision too, I think would be helpful. In the previous employee manual, there was one provision of the manual which required immediate termination upon a DUI or DWI, and then there was another conflicting provision of the manual that allowed the city discretion. So we really did take a lot of time to revamp this article to make sure that the city, you know, considered certain factors that were outlined in here before they came up with their decision. Um, the last chance agreement is a pretty common and standard solution to these types of situations. And in every last chance agreement, you really do, you know, it's a give and take. You're given a second chance, and the offset to that is that if it happens again, it's an immediate consequence. You don't have that ability to, to question it, but you're given that second opportunity, whereas in the old manual, you could read one provision saying you didn't even have a second chance. So this is more employee-friendly, but it's also very strict on, here are the options X, Y, and Z. With regard to the, the proposed ten-year period of the duration of the last chance agreement, you know, that kind of what came, we came up with as typically, and if you're in a court of law, they're not really gonna look at any convictions or anything that happened ten years ago. So that's kind of where we came up with that, that timeframe, is, you know, you really shouldn't be considering or using something that happened ten years ago against somebody, so.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, the, the question I, or the scenario, I guess, I posed to bring this up was, you know, if someone gets a DUI, DWI, and, uh, they stay employed with the city, and twenty-five years later, they get stupid again and, and get another DUI. You know, should there be some kind of time limit or some consideration there? I, and I don't know, you know, I, I just kinda raised it as a question. I, you know, I kinda feel if, if they were in continuous employment with the city, and, and the city knows that nothing else happened in that interim, maybe there should be some kind of time limit, but if they left employment and came back some number of years later, uh, and something happened, well, you may not, you know, you may not know what had happened in the interim while they were gone. If we wanna keep it, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Mr. Sullivan.
Whether it's worth anything, um, a pardon for a misdemeanor is seven years, and it's ten years for a felony, so if you wanna use it as a parameter.
All right, um, on page thirty-two, the disqualifications. We've, on page thirty-two, it'd be E two. I, I just don't understand C. I know it is a big change to what it used to be. And this, I, and I've, I expressed this, that I'm not even sure if I understand why we have this policy, and I, I'm just, on C, to me, there's issues that if you, if you leave the scene of an accident, you're not allowed to drive a vehicle for sixty months, if I'm understanding this right. And some of these things, our old policy, the one right above it, says been convicted of three or more moving violations or at fault accidents in the, in the past thirty-six months, I think that's very appropriate. But I think when we remove, part of what was on this list was the, um, been convicted of an alcohol or drug-related offense while driving, the second one was had a driver's license suspended or revoked. And where I have a problem with this is, is, you know, we, we have an employee, I, I, that could simply be backing up a car and hit a car and leave, and if he cited on a, what I would consider a very significant, or insignificant thing, that, then we're gonna say you can't drive. Where, where, if it's, you know, three or more convictions, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, I, I think, I, I don't know how Jeff Roberts feels, but I would imagine in snowplowing, uh, you know, could this have a negative effect on mailboxes and, and, and signs? Now generally, we, if we damage that, we probably just go back and fix it. But if you have someone that says, I'm calling the police, I wanna report May, and, and the potential, I, I just think, I just think when you're taking things like leaving the scene of an accident or driving fifteen miles over the speed limit, if you're convicted, you can no longer drive a car. I think being convicted of three or more moving violations or at fault violations, I, I think the other stuff should be left in there, been convicted of a felony. You know, we're not even, if somebody, if, the new proposal here, if somebody is convicted of misdemeanor motor vehicle homicide, th- they technically could come back and drive, but if someone leaves the scene of an accident and a very minor accident is cited, then they come back and don't, can't drive. So for, I don't know why we pulled out, uh, um, I don't know why we pulled out, I'm, I'm losing my thought here. Being a convicted felon, being convicted of a sale or distribution or, or use of drugs, being convicted of an alcohol or drug-related offense while driving, had, had driver's licenses suspended or revoked. These five, these six or seven, what I would call moving type, uh, accident-causing violations, in the code book, there's probably hundreds of them. I don't know why we picked these out, I just think we're, we're gonna punish employees severely on this one thing. And, and, and simple things like, there's not willful reckless driving in here. There, there's a law that was passed on eluding police, if you're eluding police for a felony, it's a felony eluding. If you're on a misdemeanor, it's a misdemeanor eluding. And to me, C has, I think, the, the, uh, violations that have been picked, I think a couple of them are good. But, but we could add, we could add a lot of these, mist- I said misdemeanor motor vehicle homicide, running a stoplight, running the traffic light, failure to yield away, y- yield right of way, crossing the center line in proper turn, improper lane change, failure to stop for a pedestrian in a crosswalk, I could, we didn't include willful reckless driving, negligent, negligent driving. I don't understand why these are here. And I, I just think it needs to go back to the old policy, or definitely this needs to go, cause I think being convicted of three or more moving violations is appropriate.
To address that, um, this is directly taken from the old policy, there were things removed that you had mentioned, um, the felony. We cannot hold, say, a felony for robbery against someone driving a vehicle that gets into, um, different areas of discrimination, so that is why we remove the felony portion of that.
Okay, but what about?
But, and I also, I just kinda wanna say that I do disagree that an employee leaving the scene of an accident, whether it's just someone backing up, that's, that's an ethical issue, that's a moral issue too. I'm, I don't see that as a minor issue.
Well, I, I, I don't, I, but, but just saying if you're convicted of it, I think, I, I don't think, I don't think C is appropriate to be here. How about, how about the convicted of alcohol or drug-related offense or driving during a suspended license? Do you know why that was re- removed? Cause here's what I look at. You get someone with a drunk driving, and the courts generally put you on six months, or, I'm sorry, twelve months of revocation. And then a guy leaving the scene of a PD or going fifteen miles over, now he's being told he can't drive a city vehicle for sixty months. I, I think a drunk driving is more severe.
It's, we're not talking about the severity of offenses, we're talking about the liability and the exposure to the city, to poor driving. And what kind of employees we wanna have driving our vehicles, we're not, it's not our job in this article to determine what's worse or less offensive. That's not the intent of the article.
But I guess maybe I'm not making my, I, I think, why were these picked? Why were these six, seven, eight picked? That's what, I guess that's what I'm trying to get to.
I know, when we discussed this last time we met, um, we had talked about how the Insurance and Safety Coordinator had actually checked with the liability carrier, and this was the recommendation she came up with after looking at our liability coverage, seeing what would keep our premium costs down. So it's actually more of a liability exposure and cost effectiveness for the city.
And that was part of my concerns.
Councilwoman Blood.
When I was, when I have helped with HR policy in the, in the past, the way I was taught, and again, you can correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm old and I got several decades of, of experience and it's changed. I was always taught that your lead-in paragraph was really the most important when it came to the policy, and what fell under it were more examples than anything. And what I read in this first paragraph is, "In all cases, these vehicles are to be operated in strict compliance with motor vehicle laws of the jurisdiction." So that would pretty well create an umbrella over whatever people thought perhaps were missing within the list below legally. Um, at least that's what I was always taught, and that's why you say that, I mean, if they, and I, eh, driving a city vehicle is a privilege. Not their right, it's our privilege, it's taxpayer money that we're responsible for. Somebody knowingly bumps another car and drives off, they've committed a crime, period.
The, uh, appendix G, I know that we, page eighty-eight, I know that we had asked, I had asked for the mission statement to be put in here, and it was put in here. I, I don't know about the Bellevue Key Initiatives.
Um, that was also an issue that Mr. Modri had
Okay.
brought up, and we have talked about this since, and he's also gonna put a proposal in tonight to amend that.
And, go ahead.
Go for it, Jim. Thank you. Uh, yeah, uh, I had discussed appendix G with you, uh, you know, that it really didn't match, you know, our key initiatives now that we have outlined in our strategic plan and, and those other items, and, uh, so Ashley, you came back with recommenda- recommended content for that, and so, uh, I will make a motion to amend appendix G accordingly here, when we get to that point.
And do we have any, uh, Dan, I don't know if it would be internally or through them, do we have any, like SOP that would say, like, as a timeframe, every two years, this manual should be gone through another review? I think part of the problem that we've had here is, from the best I know, about, probably in the two thousand and twelve, is probably started the process here, and I, I guess I'm concerned, and I realize Amy was here, and then Angela was here, and then Ashley was here. So it was a process, but, but if there's not a policy internally, then I would probably make a motion that, that would require us to go through this like on a, every, every two-year period.
Okay, I don't think we need a policy, I can assure you, uh, just as with job descriptions, where we periodically review all of those to make sure they're accurate, cause people's jobs do change. Carol made reference to our prior, or the one-year, your current Personnel Manual, which fortunately the city paid a lot of money for, and had a lot of deficiencies and a lot of inconsistencies in it. We did start early on when it came apparent, back in probably late two thousand and eleven into twelve, that there were problems with that manual. There were I-issue, areas that, that were not covered, there were inconsistencies, we could talk. We could talk about the contradictory language in the DUI, which ran into an issue with a personnel matter, which we had pointed out to us by, uh, an attorney. Um, and so we would periodically, uh, probably no more than every two years, go through and do a review of it. And the thing we would also do would, once you now adopt an updated manual, as situations dictate a change to a policy, we will bring that policy back for it to be acted on at that time. So that way, we don't wait and you have a, a accumulation of, of areas that needed to be addressed. We will try to stay up to date on those, so that way, this is a much easier process, and we get the changes need that need to be made. So that's something we will do. We have, obviously, we've talked about the fact we've bolstered our HR area, uh, we're in a lot better position. And so that's something we would do, uh, out of just, you might say, um, proper management in the HR area, along with any other areas of HR. So the bottom line is, yes, we will.
Could we have a policy? I, I, I guess my problem is.
I don't think, uh, we don't have a policy, Paul.
In-house, at, at Karen Jackson's level?
I mean, yeah, we have professionals here, they're, they're sharp people. Uh, it's no different than making sure that periodically, we will have directors and staff review job descriptions, to make sure they are current. If they need to be revised, we revise them. Um, it's probably no different, you know, in a certain degree. Um, I mean, we will keep this manual up to date to make sure that the changes get made, uh, be, are brought before you, um, maybe every year. If, within a year, we may come back a couple of times if we find there's areas that need to be changed. I wouldn't want to set every two years, because then we'd say, "Well, we don't need to wait for," we'd just wait two years. No, we, we will do it as needed.
And, and one last thing. Do, when someone files a complaint, either, uh, an employee or a citizen, do we notify them of the outcome? Not, not in the sense of discipline, but it was, it was investigated and, you know, it was not sustained. Do, do we send out a letter or some type of notification to someone that files a complaint?
Well, if there's a complaint, the normal type of complaint regarding that we haven't done something, or there's a problem, the city needs to be resolved, obviously, we do get back to either you, the council member, to get back to the citizen, or we'll respond back to the citizen directly. On personnel issues, we would probably indicate that, uh, there was disciplinary action taken or there wasn't. We have to be very careful of that. Angela, I may have you kind of weigh in on that one.
Um, typically, what I've seen in the past is, obviously, the employee who is under investigation would get the full fact-finding and results of that investigation. If it was, say, an employee filed a sexual harassment complaint against another employee, I, we have in the past let them know if it was unsubstantiated or substantiated, but that's pretty much it, so.
And, and the reason why I'm asking is, I've had someone that has been a citizen and someone that has been an employee, that stated they made a complaint, and I took it as an official complaint, and they never heard anything, just absolutely nothing.
I think I know what you're referring to, and, uh, that person's attorney was advised of the result, because they were represented.
Okay. I'm not sure if you know who I'm talking about, but I, I just think that, and, and I appreciate what you're saying.
One way or another, they are informed, yes or no.
Because a lot of people, a, a citizen, and, and Angela, the, the reason why I'm saying is that a citizen filing a complaint isn't going to generally be standing next to an attorney. Now, in-house, that may occur. But if a citizen out on the street is involved in a traffic stop and doesn't say, you know, "I want to make a complaint against an officer," they will just fill out a form or type something up and bring it. I don't think it's a matter of an attorney standing there with them and, and, and being their legal, you know, advisor on it. I think they're just coming down with a sheet of paper and, you know, Mark, Chief Albert might get a phone call and, and, you know, a week later, comes, here comes a complaint. I'm just simply asking, if someone makes a complaint, are they advised? And I don't mean outcome in the sense it was a discipline, termination. I'm saying, the complaint was received, it was, it was investigated, it was either sustained or not sustained. I am just saying a simple thing, so that they know there's a conclusion to it.
From my experience, and I don't know how the police handle complaints against officers, but, like, personnel-related complaints, um, the person who filed it may not be notified immediately, because there is an investigation that will occur first, and then, once the investigation is complete, then they will be notified of the outcome. And that's been my experience in all cases.
Okay. If you're telling me that's being done, then that's, I, I'm, thank you very much. That's all I have. Okay. Did you?
Uh, yeah, it's Councilmember Modri distributed, you should have got the, in terms of, for the, uh, including the mission statement, mission statement, uh, that would be in the, um, manual.
Councilwoman Blood.
Since it sounds like there are so many proposed amendments, Pat, is it okay if we drag this night out a lot even further and have everybody give an amendment as an individual motion, since they may have multiple, and maybe we agree with one of them, but not all of them?
Sure.
Yeah. I, I think what I'd look for on this is a motion to approve the, uh, Employee Handbook as presented in the packets, because we have made some changes since a month ago. And then do individual motions on each other item, uh, so that we can see what we want to approve and not approve.
Okay. Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. In that vein, I would make the motion to approve, and then any amendments can follow. So my motion is to approve the newly-written and updated Employee Manual as it's currently drafted in our packet.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood.
So now you guys can, the motion. Now you guys can make motions to amend it in any forms.
Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I move that, uh, we make an amendment to the, uh, Employee Handbook by striking the contents of appendix G and replacing with the, uh, the handout, which I distributed, which goes over, in more generic terms, the goal, mission, vision, and core values of the city, rather than getting into each of those strategic initiatives.
Second. Second by Councilwoman Blood. We don't want to go any faster than Sabrina can write. We're good? Now, we vote on this amendment?
We vote on that amendment.
So, um, do we have any questions? Do we have a first and a second? No questions? Please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you. Mr. Modri.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make this, uh, motion, I'm not sure if I'm in total agreement with it, but I'll throw it out and see how you vote. Like to move that we amend section four, IVC four, the third paragraph, first sentence, by striking the words "will last for the duration of" and inserting in its place the words "shall apply to current," by also inserting at the end of the sentence the words "for a period not to exceed ten years of total employment." So the new sentence would read, uh, as follows. "The last chance agreement shall apply to current employment, and if applicable, subsequent reemployments for a period not to exceed ten years of total employment."
I'll second the motion. Um, I, I'll, I have some discussion if.
So we have the motion and a second by Mr. Cook. Any discussion?
Pat, can you give us your professional opinion? I mean, I, I, I like what Jim's saying, I'm just, I, I just want your opinion as far as what you feel.
Uh, you know, this is really not a legal question, to be honest with you. Um, I think that, in general, we are a world that gives people breaks after they've served out their time, and, and to have a, uh, uh, cloud hanging over you for the rest of your employment is a little tough for me to swallow, but, again, that's a total call, uh, by the city council.
Any other discussion? Mr. Preister.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate bringing it up. For me, uh, when somebody's driving a city vehicle and they have had, uh, driving under the influence charge, ten years is not enough for me. That's a very serious responsibility, whether it's a snowplow driver, whether it's anybody else. I certainly believe in second chances. I would hope that they would have gotten some treatment, because making an irresponsible decision at twenty-one is not the same as making it at forty-one, or fifty-one, or sixty-one. And so, I understand the issue, I'm sympathetic, but I'm going to vote no, because I think we need to be more responsible with our employees and be upfront with them to that regard. Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second?
I'd like to ask, have a, so what, what Jim's thing is, motion is saying, is that we're only, we would count the DUIs in a ten-year period.
Yes, limitations would be ten years.
And that would mimic what the state of Nebraska looks back at as far as counting DUIs on any citizen.
Counting DUIs is fifteen years. So, uh, is this last chance specifically just to DUIs? Okay. So the state law is fifteen.
Did I amend my amendment?
Do we need to vote on this amendment before he amends the amended?
He, he can make a motion to amend this.
I, I would like to amend my amendment.
Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to amend my amendment to fifteen years.
And we have a second by Mr. Preister, to add fifteen years to the amendment.
So just so we're clear, we're voting on the amendment to the amendment?
Yeah. Now we'll vote on the amendment if it's approved.
So you, you got the motion and the second discussion, any further discussion? See none, please vote.
Vote on fifteen years.
Vote is five to one, motion passes.
You?
Now you, now you vote on. Now you know, vote on the amendment as amended, the fifteen years to have it added to the, uh, handbook.
Please vote.
Vote is five to one, motion passes.
I, I'll make, just, um, when we talked about, um, in the page thirty, the fourth paragraph, where the employee will waive all rights to contest any termination resulting in a violation of the last chance agreement, I'm going to make a motion that that sentence is removed.
Do we have a second? Motion fails. We have a second by Mr. Modri. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Vote is four to two, motion fails.
You?
I'm done. Thank you.
And there should be a motion to.
A motion to, well, we've already got a motion on the floor, so now it will be a, a motion to, or, I'm sorry, a vote to approve the handbook as amended.
Any discussion? See none, please vote. Thank you. Item number thirteen, current business. Approval of consent to an assignment of lease and authorize mayor to sign conditional, conditioned upon receiving a fully executed assignment and proof of insurance as provided in the lease. Mr. Sullivan.
Simply the, uh, property owner, uh, that is adjacent to the leased property of the, uh, city, uh, is in the process of selling that and wants to pass, uh, this lease on to, uh, the new owner. I'm asking that, uh, we're not sure when that date's going to occur, so we're going to hold off signing the consent until such time as it is executed and the new owner does provide us proof of insurance.
Mr. Preister.
Mayor, thank you. I, I'm just uncertain about giving a blank approval to, uh, lease. It doesn't have a name or anything in the one that I'm reading, so to just say we approve a lease is a little uncomfortable for me, and I hesitate. We need to add some additional language or identifier or something, so it's one we are clear when somebody looks at the.
We, in your packet, you should have both the lease that you are signing and the names that it is transferring from in the assignment. You should have the assignment as well.
It, it's all there, so would the motion then be to approve the lease, the lease assignment with Eric Ying?
Correct.
Is that clear enough to?
Eric Ying to, I forget who the other name is, Hodges or something like that.
What, did you need to say anything more about that?
No, let me just get to that, just a second.
In the one-line description, that's why I raise it.
To Dane Hodges.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, and it's in the assignment and assumption.
Right. It's in the packet, but it just wasn't in the motion.
Right.
That's my motion.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Blood. Any discussion? See none, please vote.
Vote is five to one, motion passes.
Thank you. Item fourteen, public request to be heard. Any member of the public addressing the council shall abide by Council Policy Number Thirty-Five regarding the principles of conduct and decorum, which states any statements made during city council meeting, the mayor, members of the city council, city officials, and employees or members of the general public shall not involve impertinent or slanderous attacks on individuals regardless whether the individual so attacked is elected official. City official or employee or members of the general public in section City Code two-dash-six-eight regarding the matters of addressing the council. Copies of the aforementioned rules are posted outside the council chambers. Speakers shall limit their presentations to five minutes.
Chuck Frederick, one-five-one-one, Madison Street. I believe, Mayor, if that's the same thing you've been reading all this time, according to the letter I got from ACLU, and you got a copy of it, too, it's not appropriate. Any taxpayer, any citizen has a right to, to talk about any individual on this council, and as long as they're respectful, if they want to say something about their performance in their job, I think it's appropriate. So I think you better think about changing that. Uh, two weeks ago, when the, uh, you had the code of conduct for citizens, I forgot to mention that I'm the guy that brought the ACLU, the code of conduct to the ACLU office on Dodge Street. And after that meeting, there was, uh, some people, council people were on television, and they were trying to blame the, blame the, uh, ACLU for, for doing what they did, and as far as I'm concerned, that's, this, that subject should never have been put on the, on the agenda. It should have been thought out and talked about and, and eliminated before it ever got talked about, so you wouldn't have had all this embarrassment before that time. The other thing is that, uh, I'm a little offended by councilperson always saying my comments are inappropriate. I'm a taxpayer, I wasn't a city council, I feel that what I say is pertinent, I've been around long enough to have enough information, enough, uh, knowledge, and enough, uh, comments to make, that I shouldn't be criticized by one person that I, that what I'm saying is inappropriate. I, I, you know, I'm insulted by that, and I'm a little tired of that. One thing you could do to speed up the meeting, when I was the city council, when a council person spoke, they did not have the right to speak again until everybody else in the council spoke. There are a couple of times, I think it's still the same ruling, there are a couple of times, a couple of council people spoke again after they spoke and basically said the same thing. Uh, that, all that is take up, takes up more time. Me asking for your monthly balance sheet and wanting to, uh, the state of Nebraska to do audit this year, that's not inappropriate. That's something I feel that should be done. When, uh, when I, I ran for mayor against, uh, Mrs. Sanders last year, we had a debate, and that debate, uh, now that she suggests I go to move to Papillion, but she also suggested that, don't watch, don't look at my website, Chuck Frederick, uh, see ChuckFrederick.com. And I think people have the entitlement to look at that website, because I can see a lot more there than I can in the five minutes I have here. When I ran for mayor, I said on my platform that I would, I would appoint new people. I would have appointed, uh, Jeff Roberts, city engineer, I would have replaced the city treasurer, I would have had. I would have replaced the city attorney with a full-time city attorney, and I would have agreed with the three councilpeople who voted against the current city administrator, so we would have had a new city administrator. You know, I think it's time that we have more transparency, and the way we have it is by, number one, having that audit from the state come in here and take a look at it. I have questions about the audit, and why can't you talk about one of them just right now? I looked at the audit, and the cell phone towers, when we sold that for 2.6 million, and it was told at that time that we're gonna, we're gonna still get half the revenue from the income from the towers. If you look at, what I looked at on that, on that, on that audit report, we're not getting any, any money at all now. Something's wrong somewhere. So, either the contract was not what I thought it was, what Mr. Severson said it was, or otherwise something's been changed, so we're losing income, half of that income, and Mr. Severson said it was gonna keep on increasing. So, you might want to take a look at that, just, just one thing. There's a number of other things I'll talk about another time, but thank you very much.
Are there others? Now, I'll go ahead and close a public request to be heard. Item 15, adjournment. Councilwoman Blood.
Motion to adjourn.
A second by Mr. Preister. Any discussion? Please vote.
I'll vote yes.
Thank you, and have a good night.